Okay, it's six thirty and I will call this meeting to order. This is a joint meeting between the Enon Village Council and the trustees of Mad River Township for the purpose of discussing ideas and getting some comments regarding the property that was purchased jointly for the development of a sportsplex. Kevin, if you would, call the roll for the record, please.
Mr. Babcock?
Here.
Mrs. Sweet?
Here.
Mr. Bear?
Here.
Mr. Whitaker?
Here.
Mr. Avery?
Here.
Mr. Hannah?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. McClure?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Okay, so we do have all members of council present and two members of the trustees present. If you would, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So if we could, maybe we'll start off with a few updates from Mr. Hannah and Mr. Pettit and then we'll field some questions, comments, ideas from those in attendance. So Rick, Todd, I'll turn it over to either one of you.
Okay. You go ahead and start with. As we know, which way would be best paced? As we know, this is a joint project with the village of Enon and Mad River Township. I'd like to call this our stage two where we initially came out and discussed the purpose and the purchase around June, July of this year with the public. And our idea was to come back once that we had an idea of things that we may want to provide in this proposed park that we're now calling Enon Sports Park. We have reached out to engineers who have given us renderings of some of the items that we've requested. Some of them come from the Enon Strategic Planning Committee that was made several years ago. Some of this was from public outreach after we purchased the property this year and ideas that were presented back to us. Now, as the folks here with us have the schematic of the proposed park, which incorporates the new sixty-four point four-nine acres that we have directly behind and to the south of Suburban Propane adjoining the current Enon Park. So our proposed plans to start out would be using two small parks where we presently have our well fields, the pump houses on the south side of Enon Park itself. And where that has been one long park, we would break that into two small, for lack of a better term, kiddie soccer fields. To the west of that, we already have a soccer field in place that we're going to have to size according to the ground that we have right there to make that playable. So thanks to the Mad River Township trustees, Mr. Pettit, today, the park cul-de-sac has a road for our initial entry back into the new park cut in today. So that's, does have a road back there now where you do not see that in any other plans. Secondarily, in the extreme northwest corner of that, the village has already made plans to incorporate an ADA compliant playground. Part of the reason for that to be segregated from the rest of the park would be for safety, some type of noise barrier a little bit and where we could let parents who may have handicapped children or the need to have a little better control or to eliminate some outside stimuli. So that's what we currently have now at Enon Park. Our proposed plan, as we see it right now with the renderings, again, this can all be changed, but what our initial plans are that we're seeing here in front of us now would be the addition of four soccer fields. One would be a multipurpose field incorporating four baseball softball fields. Each one of those fields we would be looking at probably around three hundred and twenty foot on the softball baseball field with expandable fences where you could pull those in to accomplish or to be able to play multi-leagues from little league all the way up to softball, baseball and to try to draw participants in for possible tournaments at a latter date. We also have facilities for four pickle tennis basketball courts that we would have in the area that's directly south of Suburban Propane, parallel to Wardens Ditch. So that's where we would be looking at the basketball, pickleball and tennis courts. Now, one thing that we do have to realize off of this is we do have some constraints with the Corps of Engineers, with the EPA, and also with the floodplain situation here. So we do have to meet a lot of different requirements with where we place things and how we elevate or how we have to lay this out. Our last but major attraction there would be a dog park in the south central part of the park itself. And that is basically close to the terrace where the prior Conley property drops off to go back into the farming area. So one thing off of that is that you would be able to have a walking, running trail that would go around the whole perimeter of the park itself. And right now, that looks like that would be about a mile and a half or one lap around this facility. I guess that's basically it. Now, again, going back to when the Enon Strategic Plan was developed, some of the criteria that the people looked at and what they were wanting to us to accomplish is that there would be a walking or running pass, there would be a dog park, an ADA compliant playground, there would be a nature walk or a quiet area where you could go back and contemplate if that was your particular need that day. Updated park and facilities, possible water park, expand social events and venues where the village could provide space for larger events and a fishing pond. I think those were reasonable at the time, but what we've added is the needs for softball, baseball diamonds, soccer fields, the pickleball tennis balls or tennis and basketball courts. And recently, after the COVID experience, more opportunities for family to be out in the open air. So these are some of the needs, some of the wants that were within the community when we first started talking about this plan itself. Again, the benefits that we would hope off of this would be that if we do it right and make it a place that people would want to come and experience these sports, we could bring a lot more people and expose them to the village and Mad River Township as well as our business folks to make a better situation for them to, ideally, at some point, these facilities could be, and our hope would be they become self-sustaining for tournaments. With that, we would have to make a major investment into this project to make it a showplace where people are going to want to come to play. And I guarantee you, if we build that for people, as they say, they will come. With that, I guess that's about that unless there be any other questions or comments.
Quick question. Rick, on the ADA, that proposed area up in that northern corner there, is that something that's, that we anticipate to be part of the development associated with this or is that going to be developed through other funds or?
I think that was through other funds where we had reached out to see if there might be any type of state grants or anything for the parks themselves to incorporate the ADA compliant.
Gotcha. Is there, do we have anything definite?
There is, but I haven't confirmed any.
There's nothing definite on that.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, I think that was where we kind of earmarked that corner back there to try to, to make that specifically ADA compliant.
What's the EPA concern, Rick?
Pardon me?
What's the EPA concern?
EPA would be like restrooms, to have permanent restrooms. It's my understanding and from the engineers, the day that we went up there and visited them, that we may have to elevate a permanent fixture or permanent structure by eight foot to have restrooms out there. Is that correct, Mayor, if you recall?
That one, I don't know. You just need the isolation radius for the wells. I know that part, but as far as the actual structure that would house the restrooms, I don't know.
Yeah, because that came up today that people were wanting to have a permanent restroom type facility down there. And I know that would be our goal is to, if we were.
Oh, absolutely.
Is that for the floodwater? Is that why they would want it eight feet? Because it doesn't ever get that hateful, I don't think, but.
That was from Jason, the day that we went up there. Do you remember?
Be similar to the, the treatment facility is elevated. I'm guessing the floor elevation of your facility there on Enon Road, would any permanent structure have to match that? It's kind of why the pump buildings are elevated. That would be your elevation above the flood, floodplain for that. They've got it marked on there, the hundred year mark across.
So, so the floodplain regulations, once the property would be annexed, would fall under the village floodplain, you know, what is it, Kevin? One foot above base flood elevation or something like that? However, you know, the EPA and Health Department will also weigh in because they're going to have to sign off on it for any kind of final approval, so.
I think after we went in and spoke with the engineer, all of us, our heads were spinning that particular day because there was the Corps of Engineer, there was EPA, there was the drainage, there was the floodplain and trying to keep all these things in order on that particular day was staggering to me.
But you remember eight feet? Was that kind of the number that was?
That was what stays with me, was the eight foot off of that.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, thank you.
Todd, any comments?
The only one I had, this is kind of for you, Rick. You didn't want me to put this parking line today, did you, right here? I did a twenty-foot road, roughly three, and you did not want that cut into my car.
No, 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 that, that was kind of where we would see.
That's a good thing.
Yes, we wanted that to be great. Yes, that was supposed to happen.
There was, if I can, there was another question that came up from Councilman Bear, and that was where we see, if you can do this.
Now you turned it off.
Well, we can't see that, but it was the area that would be.
You broke it.
Over here, along the road that would be behind Suburban Propane. And Todd had, or Bennett asked about putting basketball courts over across here. So a lot of this stuff we can incorporate with how major groundland itself. We, we have the land. One thing that we did learn this past year by going to different venues and seeing how different parks were laid out was that when you put this layout of the softball, baseball fields and the soccer fields over the top of them, you can double your space off of that. And so conceivably, if we put a couple of those in, we have an area that can be taken out of soccer field over here and making whatever we need off of it. So again, our big thing is that we've got the land here, we've got a general outlay of what our plans or what our wants, what our dreams might be. Ultimately, the problem is going to be in funding and finding funding. That's our.
Is it?
Our need, I think, will be from the little leagues that are going to be coming across, the younger soccer leagues that did have historically places to play that were a little better than when the school was there before and we've lost one of those facilities, so.
I have a quick question. Are you going to stock the fishing ponds?
Yeah, it probably won't take much to stock those because if we use those as what they call borrow pits to pull that dirt from those particular spots that we would be having the ponds to take some of the topsoil, take some of the aggregate to other places, you know, as it's animal, the fishes will start coming in there. So I see no reason why we couldn't do that.
We'll get some put in there.
Don't ponds have to have an in and an out to keep fresh?
No, this is water table, so.
Okay.
These ponds turn on their own. That water will be under your, you wouldn't have to dig very deep, probably. I'm guessing four to six feet there, you'll be under water table.
Okay, thank you.
It's a window to the aquifer.
Yep.
And we did talk to EPA or the hydrogeologist the day that he came out and saw different spots where we could go ahead and, and look at our future wells. And we did ask him specifically about branching off of Wardens Ditch over here, going into a pond and having an outflow where the water would constantly be flowing through there. And he did not see a problem with that. But again, you know, that's, that's just options for us to, that we have in the future.
Any other questions? Okay, well, I will, at this time, open it up to comments from our attendees this evening. And if you have a comment or a question or an idea, if you would come up and state your name and the organization that you're associated with, that would be wonderful.
Soccer fields, would you have a storage place?
Hello, everybody. I'm Michael Beekman, I'm president of the softball league here.
Good evening.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for having us. First off, I think it's cool that, like you, well, there's not a big group, but at least you opened it up. You know, I was just kind of curious, like, how you came up with the number of soccer fields and baseball diamonds and?
Purely subjective. You know, we have a, our, what we did was when we went to the engineer, we said, we've got this plot of land here, how can we best accomplish? So with the program that he had with some movements of the mice and, you know, this is where we came up with the basic layout off of it.
Rectangles are easier to fit than quarter circles, I get it. I just, you know, that kind of concerns me because, like, you know, baseball has a lot of fields, softball, we have three fields. And I know that softball is technically not in as dire need as baseball and soccer, but what I've kind of talked to people is at some point, I got to imagine, the school district is going to realize they have all this green space out behind the school that kids at the school don't play in anymore and will determine that they don't need that land, right? Then all of a sudden softball doesn't have someplace, kind of just like what happened to baseball and soccer, but, you know, so I'd like, I guess, from my perspective, it'd be nice if we could kind of think about that going forward, whereas right now, four baseball fields probably does it, but who knows, next year, the school district could say, man, we could put a bunch of houses back there and now all of a sudden we need three more softball fields someplace, so.
And actually, that was what we were hoping to have more public comment about, to say, okay, what are the needs specifically about the number of diamonds? Because again, we, we can make some of these interchangeable, but we, we basically had our initial concept and however we tweak it from here, that's exactly what we are doing in here tonight.
Yeah.
Would you need three fields or could you get by with two, do you think, for maybe future planning?
I would say we have three now.
Right.
You know, it's not, it's the old, you know, could you do with what you have or could you do with less or could you do with more? You could always use more fields. I don't see this past season, I don't see how we would have gotten away with two fields easily.
Okay.
You know, I'm not going to say you could, obviously, yeah, obviously, two fields is better than zero fields, but.
We could use two and a half fields. Our T-ball field, the little field, we wouldn't need all the time. So it's nice that it's there, but.
Three fields, then.
Yeah.
Three fields, okay.
Which baseball is currently utilizing three as well, which I invited Enon Little League to attend and I thought somebody was coming, but apparently not. But they currently use three fields on Snyder Road. And I know it is, pack, they actually got the VFW this past year to be able to utilize it, so they're using four fields currently. Now, the thing is with how we have this set up, you know, it looks like there's probably a hundred feet in between the fields, which, you know, you don't want them, to me, you don't want them back to back to where, you know, balls are flying into each other's diamonds. But I feel like we could probably fit in some more, some more fields. And I, you know, I agree with Michael. At some point, we may need to have softball fields as well, and you're not going to be able to run a baseball league and softball league concurrently on four fields.
No, Jeremy, one thing that we did discuss with the engineer was not this field, but you would have a diamond that would be placed back here, you could. So that, that was one option of adding another baseball field and taking out a major soccer field back there. Or, but that was one, one period of place where we're talking about possible.
And something, I mean, to go along with that is, like he said, with their T-ball field, you know, Little League could do the same thing, you know, for their coach pitch and T-ball league. They don't need three hundred and twenty foot fences, they need a hundred foot fence. You know, they just need a little diamond where, you know, we could probably do three of those fields and three of the big fields and be able to fit almost right there where we're at.
Yeah, because each one of those fields.
Have the three big ones and then have three little ones through here.
Because those are, I think we said three twenty off of that, just so that way it gave us a bigger scope of just laying the diamonds in there.
Is the idea that the well area or nature areas are not?
So, so the area in blue, that's a three hundred foot radius that's required by the EPA, that doesn't mean that property can't be used. So soccer field, Bennett and I were just talking, soccer fields could actually be located there or even ball diamonds, as long as we control what actually went on the grass. So if there was some kind of an agreement there, and we've done that in the past, we know it does work, it's just a little bit more tedious for, you know, the upkeep of the property, but it does not rule out the use over that isolation radius. So that's something else to think about.
We could put a couple of small fields there on the south side of Smith's Ditch, couldn't we? A dog park, it would look like a couple would fit there pretty easily to me.
That's, yeah, I think there's plenty of room to do it. I just feel like we need to have, I mean, at minimum, six, but probably seven. And like we were talking, you know, if we can fit those three little fields in there, that's going to take an enormous load of games off of the huge diamonds that they don't need to be on anyway.
The more fields you have, Jeremy, wouldn't we also need more parking?
Which I, you know, I kind of probably feel like we probably need more parking than what is on here, myself. You know, on Saturdays, when Little League's there and softball would be there, I mean, you're talking.
Could be packed.
Tons, that's why I was hoping Little League was coming so they could get, and I told them, you know, kind of come with what the schedule is, how many, if you can estimate how many people are there, you know, for an hour at a time.
Right. Yeah, I mean, on a given, we've, we had nights in softball where there's three games and you're talking ten girls a game.
Right. Per team, so yeah, sixty.
Yeah, that's sixty kids, so one car per kid is.
Parents, sometimes grandparents.
Oh, yeah.
There's something else in here. One of the reasons why this got changed, to have such a vast area between the diamonds themselves, was thinking about trying to elevate this concession supply building, storage building, whatever it was, where we'd have like a graduated seating that would go up that would kind of eliminate that eight foot and make that be less obtrusive. So should, just thought crossed my mind just a second ago, if we would build our restrooms and our supply buildings outside of this, the center of these diamonds, then all of a sudden you, we've clamped that back in, you could possibly come up with a couple of diamonds over here and then maybe put your restrooms out here someplace in the outer area, but you've consolidated these four diamonds much more than what they are right there.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was kind of thinking that same idea there. If you moved where that parking lot was, consolidated those four pie pieces, that circle, move that whole circle east, you almost have room for another four diamonds. You know, when you play with the geometry of those circles, if you move, you know, if you start putting all those soccer fields into the outfield, right? I think there's a lot of land there if you get creative about where the parking goes to.
And I think with, you know, if it's going to be dual use to where, you know, in the spring and summer, baseball and softball is going to be there, and then in the fall, soccer is going to be using it, you would almost want your restroom and concessions at kind of a central space.
Right.
To where, you know, the soccer fields, you know, someone's going to want to come from up here to the concession stand and restrooms. You'd almost want it like in here.
That's where I think, right behind the propane is where I would like to see it, right on, because it's closer to the, to the building too, the water entrance.
Right.
To me, it'd make more sense to be, it'd be cheaper to put it there.
He did one rendering there too, Jason did, with placing that there, if I remember
So with soccer as well, you know, if we have to lose a soccer field, you know, we still have Galloway Park that can be utilized and that's why I was hoping, say, soccer was going to be here as well. And I know there is some local select teams as well. I'm not sure that, you know, when they made the decision to go to Snyder Road, you know, we had offered Enon Park and Galloway to them and they just decided to go a different way. I don't know if they'd even be wanting to utilize it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I would think so, but I think we have Galloway Park too.
Galloway Park's in bad shape though. When my daughter played there, we quit playing there.
Really?
Because of the asphalt that they buried under the topsoil and. It all comes at the top. Yep. Kids are falling down on the asphalt, so.
Yeah, I don't know how many soccer fields they have out there currently.
Well, I know there was two fields from last year that they can no longer use because the grass isn't growing. It's, yeah, not in great shape, but I, I think there's probably one.
You're talking the ones on Snyder Road?
Four. There's six, I think, and then one on the other side. But same thing, you know, they have two or three fields that, you know, you could probably fit three of the little kid fields on where our big Enon Park field is now. I don't, I don't know the dimensions and that's what I reached out to them as well about this evening, hoping they could bring dimensions of fields that, you know, we could write down and get with the engineer to overlay that. Because I don't, I'm not sure what these dimensions are.
It seems like I paced off, it was from the property line on the north soccer field, the big size was right about a hundred feet to the roadway, if I remember right. It was a hundred feet or a hundred yards. Because it was a little less than what the standard full-size soccer field would have been, been.
Okay.
So, and I can't really, because we've got the one field actually down there now and it would have to be downsized just a little bit to, to meet the road, particularly if we wanted to do any parking off of that, but it was one. I'm sorry, I've.
So Jeremy, you have a contact with soccer then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we need to hear from soccer, that's my opinion, after, after hearing that and make sure that they're interested.
And see, I know, like, when we used to have Indian Valley, all the soccer fields. And see, I know, I know, like when we used to have Indian Valley, all the soccer fields there, they would always have that big tournament in the fall.
Oh, yeah.
The super scrimmage or something. You know, I'm sure they would, Enan Say has soccer tournaments. In the overall Say Division, but we can never host it because we don't have the fields to do it. So, you know, that would be another. Tournament kind of thing that we could do if we had the, the fields to do it. But, you know, we would want. The soccer league to not necessarily commit to playing there, but you know. Yeah, confirm their interest in.
I agree.
Coming down there.
Yeah, we miss out on, um, the county softball and baseball tournaments also. So softball is kind of in this county league and Enan Little League baseball is in their own two totally separate leagues. There is a county combined baseball and softball league.
Okay.
That has a tournament every year and Enan never gets to host it because we don't have a combined.
Gotcha.
Fields where baseball and softball can all play together. So that's, would be another advantage of this.
So that being said, you're, you would like. Seven fields, including the T-ball and the slow pitch, the, the little, little kids?
Yes.
You think that would be sufficient? So three more small fields basically on top of what we have?
And I mean, my, my, myself, unless we're going out to adult baseball or adult softball. I don't know that we necessarily need four.
Full-size fields.
Full-size fields. I mean, if we can fit them, great. But. Just strictly for Little League and softball. It's probably three of the smaller fields. Even your softball, the larger softball fields are what, two hundred feet?
That's the biggest, yeah.
And then Little League, you know, like Little League World Series, which is the, I guess, one year younger than their oldest that they have there. I think they're on two hundred or two hundred and twenty-five foot fences. So.
Is the pond necessary? The bigger pond?
We're going to have to have a borrow pit.
Could that be on the other side of the, the creek there and make that side bigger, that pond bigger?
Keep in mind back there in the back there, we'd have to fill all that because that's the swamp right now. It's pretty low. So, well, yeah, I mean, I, I suppose we could put it over there and you're. Now you have to, we have to cross the creek.
Right.
So I know we have a little crossing there, but. That's a lot of, uh.
Lot of.
A lot of material to move.
Right.
If you have a big off-road truck, I don't know that that would be.
Just thinking if you're, if, you know, if you make that bridge a little bit, uh, more usable. And have the south side of the creek there, your borrow pit and then you can utilize. That extra space there between the.
We'd have to see the money difference because of what it would cost to. To shore up a bridge to cross to. You'd have to do the numbers. If it paid for it, yes. Otherwise. You know, that'd be, that'd be the question is how much would it cost to get across that?
True.
Alright.
We could use regular dump trucks, but, you know, when I fill a five gallon bucket with a teaspoon, it's kind of a. Fast, so.
And just to keep in mind, I, you know, I've got. With the diamonds in that three hundred foot radius. People change over time and they start putting chemicals on and something happens. You get new people in and the agreement gets lost and. They're spraying three diamonds. They're going to spray four. Who know, we may not be around when that happens, but you, you know. I. I'm not, my, myself, and I know Jason's not comfortable with anything within that three hundred foot, just for that reason that. You know, you get somebody to come in here and spray the other, you know, all the other fields are going to spray that one too. Eventually, in our, in our pen. Just something keeping in the back of your head. Unless you do AstroTurf where they don't have to spray, you know, because they're, you're going to have to spray because, you know, we're encountering that. In Enan Park and we can't spray, you know, the weeds and stuff. I mean, they, you know, so.
Now, the other, uh, alternative to that is we could move the tennis court, pickleball courts back there. I don't see why that would. It doesn't open up a lot of space up front, but it, we'd have to reconfigure some things there, but you could fit in a.
You could get a little field over there.
Little field or something.
You could put all the parking back on the well fields, right?
What's that?
Can you put parking on the well fields or?
Yeah, that, that wouldn't cause, within the three hundred foot radius, that doesn't cause an issue.
Doesn't cause a problem. So you can. You know.
And yeah, that'd be a good idea. Put all the parking back here and kind of tuck, tuck everything back towards the front. Cause I'm with them. I don't think the parking we have there's going to be sufficient.
But I, I agree with what you're saying. I think as somebody that takes care of softball fields, it would be very hard. To keep track of where you can and can't spray.
It will, it will be. What, I mean, we all know now and once it gets started, but you know, as, as people change. Get new people on and get new companies coming in and spraying.
Kids graduate, you're no longer.
You're no longer around. You're no longer around. So there it goes, the, the.
Yeah, you're one sign falling off a fence that says no spraying away from.
I think that's why soccer. I think that's why Enan Soccer quit playing down at Enan Park because we had to lime the fields all the time and. That's a lot of work. And, uh, I think that they, uh, didn't like doing it, so.
Now they have some product that I understand, in my correct tone, they have some products that'll, the paint that we can use that is.
Yeah, there's something more friendlier to the environment that's out there now, I guess.
We don't have to lime it all the time.
Yeah, that can be used.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Kevin, we're, we're at the point where possible relocation of the restroom concessions. The addition of possibly three. More so, softball, baseball fields and. Downsizing the size of probably two of the baseball or the, the three twenty fields. Something like that to, to something more like. Two eighty, something where they could still be used for, uh. For softball. What else, what else are we thinking about to, to send this back to Jason? Besides more parking too? Everybody. I think the four big fields would be fine. Like you said, we can move the fences. So that would give us an option to have things and then we could use one for a small one if, if, you know, you didn't need them. We take that building out of the center of it, that's, that's going to compress those diamonds significantly. Uh, at least a footprint there. Which would allow us once again to, to put more parking in different areas. And, and Jason did come up with some different scenarios about where, uh, our, our contact now is Noah Smith with, uh, the company. But, uh, they've been very good about coming back with different drawings when we've, we've asked him for things.
You know, I think we've got the room. We just need the right layout, right? It's got, we gotta make everything fit. It's going to be like a big puzzle and that's why we're doing this.
Just trying to figure out what we need because, you know, we don't really know.
Don't know what you're making.
Yeah, exactly right. But it sounds like it could work, but we just need to get it in the right situation here.
I do kind of like the idea of the parking lots and like the basketball courts. To be over those because you won't have to spray for those or worry about over your.
Right.
Well areas. Um, now your road will have to come out there a little bit. For a parking lot over there, but I think that could. That, that could work. Um, and again, for softball, it's not something that's needed. You know, and I don't know what your guys plan for how many years this, this is going to come to fruition. Um, but definitely when you put a baseball field in there, you're not going to want to ever move it. So same with softball. So always having that, maybe if you don't put, you know, six fields in or seven fields in right now. Having the idea of if we needed to, this land could be a field. Um, and I definitely like the multi-use soccer and, you know, the softball, baseball fields. That's. They did that at the, uh, school complex now. Soft, they were all in the same, the same, pretty much the outfield's, you know what I mean? You pretty much had the softball and baseball fields in all the corners. And then soccer was in the middle of everyone's outfield. You took in fences and, you know, soccer was in the middle of all of that. So. Yeah. And that kind of makes it multipurpose too. If you kind of turn those fields around and it's the outfield's that are. All facing each other.
The soccers are, are going to be the less expensive fields by, naturally by a long shot. The. The big money fields are going to be the, the baseball, softball combinations. Um, you know, if. If we can, uh, run across, and, and that was one of the purposes of trying to get this put together. Is so that we could start proposing that to, to different benefactors or, uh, hospitals or, or people with the. Uh, ability to, to help fund some of these, these projects. But if we, uh, can get a major benefactor off of that. Uh, and be able to, to direct most of those monies back toward the baseball complex or softball complex, then that's kind of where the, the thought process is.
And you could definitely put three of those softball, baseball little fields next to each other. Those kids are popping it off into.
Yeah.
You know, into another field as often as, you know, some of the, the bigger fields, but. Yeah, I definitely think you could probably accommodate both what, you know, soccer and, you know, baseball and probably eventually what softball would need. With plenty of land. I don't, I mean, that looks more land than what. You know, uh, the school had, you know, green space for them, so. Uh, the only other thing I was going to say was the, um, ADA compliant playground. I know it was said to be put off in that corner. Will there be a path or a blacktop path to that?
I, I kind of missed out on that. Now, we, our, our, the village already has partially the, uh, the walking path around. The, the perimeter up here along with the exercise stations. We want to incorporate that with basically going around the entire perimeter. But one thing too. Is it's important to remember that we'll have to have, have a close access to the, the. Playground for people to park with the handicap vehicles or things.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. It seems to me, and I, I'm not good with space or how long that is, that seems really far from where a parking spot would be. That you would want to, you know.
And that will probably be tweaking off of the cul-de-sac at, at some point, yeah. But, but that's what the plan is, is to, to make that as, as accessible as, as possible in all manner.
I think that's great. I'm excited. Thank you guys.
Anything else? Great ideas, great feedback. Thank you very much. Any other comments from council trustees? Rick, you'll go back and try to.
Any other thoughts from anybody that's. Understanding now where we need to tweak things.
Get something else?
I think we need to say we get this concept and we're kind of got a rough idea. Maybe we're going to piece stuff around. I think it's time to maybe present this to our county planner. And get some review, technical review comments of what the county's going to require. Need to be thinking about the stormwater requirements and some different things. Maybe they could spearhead us through the EPA. Some requirements. I mean, they, they had that technical review meeting. I think it's every Thursday or something and. You know, you could just give them something like this and say, hey, we're, this happens all the time. You know, there's a double warehouse that's planned next to the county engineer's facility on Laboran Road. You know, and it's just a farm field right now. Gabriel Brothers Big Warehouse, you know, that came in years ago. And they talked about it and they had to dig those big ponds to get enough material to do what they needed to do. But it wouldn't be a bad idea, just even if we're not locked into this positioning of the fields. Go that, at least give it to the county and let.
Absolutely.
Them digest it a little bit and give us some feedback. Because those things like Jason Arrow pointed out, the finished floor elevation on these buildings. Um, these ponds, I mean, an actual engineer is going to calculate these pond size and whatnot, you know, based on what we need as far as. Elevating soccer fields that they drain. That's been the big thing at Galloway Park. That was waste of material from the sewer job.
It was from West Indian Estates.
Yeah. And that's what, there was never any crowning or, you know, any concessions made to have top, they should have stripped topsoil off there or something, put all that in and brought it back. And it just wasn't done. So that's what, you know, we just try to do this right and it's, it's not going to happen fast. So we might as well let those guys take a look at it a little bit and maybe give us some feedback from that side. Jason Harold has. He's got some standard measurements of these fields when he's piecing them in. He's not zooming and just making them fit. He's got. On AutoCAD, he's got these standard sizes. So he started out big. But I don't know if anybody here has ever been to Action Sports down by Dayton Children's. I mean, those little fields are back to back with the nets up. I mean, you can put those right back to back and it's, you know, I'd invite anyone to get on Google Earth and zoom into. Down there, what, south of Harshman or something, down by East, Eastwood Lake, south of there. That's in the flood plain. They, um, they, you know, did a nice job of piecing things in in the space and got the bigger fields spread out. So we're not blasting foul balls at each other and stuff. So there's some things for, you know, the, anybody to look at and think about too, as we. Because Indian Valley site, if I remember right, was thirty-five acres. So we've got a lot more space here. That was thirty-five acres plus or minus with a school and parking and all that there. And there was a lot of fields there that accommodated us for years. So we've got a lot more space here and there's a great ideas about maybe shifting some parking to where the well spaces are. I mean, something to think about because I know that spraying thing is kind of aggravating a little bit. Just because, I mean, you know, I mean, down the road like we talked about, I mean. Just remembering that we can't spray in those parameters in there.
Yeah, three hundred foot radius. Yep.
So. But I mean, if we're, Rick's can, he can give some feedback back to Jason Harold and maybe we could piece some things around and have a couple. Couple concepts or something. Say this is concept one and, and take some of those con, you know, those comments and. You know, that's great, Michael, with the softball fields because who knows what the school's ever going to do. I mean, that might be for sale one day.
It scares me to death that they're going to be like, oh yeah, there's no softball field next year, just like what happened with baseball.
I was always hoping myself that the village will just buy it.
Or be donated.
No comment.
Those one dollar sales.
But I agree with Jeremy too. We need to hear from the soccer club just to see if there's any interest.
Enan's same website has their dimensions of soccer fields. So you could get on there and get dimensions of particular soccer fields. Now you would have to know what they currently are utilizing. On a days-to-day basis. Like I don't even know if baseball, if they rented the fields Monday through Saturday. Did they have them at, I think other people were using those fields.
Yeah.
So I don't even know if they were using, needed all the, those hours either. So.
They for sure do because they, they had to utilize the VFW this year.
Well, and I don't know if that's because another league was in there.
There is one select team, I think, that used it.
I did pull up some soccer dimensions and, and those are variable. I mean, there's not just one, one particular size for each one of the age groups. You've got. A variance of maybe eighty to a hundred yards, you know, here and there that, that can, can be pieced in there more readily than, uh.
If they're not, if they're not. Interested, then.
Right.
You know, why have that many soccer?
Exactly right. So who wants to take that task of making contact? Kevin, you want to take that on? Okay. I appreciate you volunteering that.
Name a number, I'll call. Name a number, I'll call. Uh, but you know, you see my point. I'm not, you know, downgrading anything to anybody, but if, if nobody's interested in. Coming aboard and utilizing them, why, you know, and if, if, if we feel that softball and baseball is going to be utilized a little bit better than. Keep a few soccer fields and, you know.
I still think it's important to keep space available in case we need.
Yes, yeah.
And they're there because we were trying to replace what we lost with the school.
Right.
So we were grateful that Snyder Road facility was there. If it wasn't there, what would the soccer programs do here?
Yeah.
You know, and, and up there in Battle Township, we had three baseball fields to use there. I mean.
I'd love to see them come back in.
It would be nice to have everybody in one location. Yeah, that'd be great.
People come into the village, you know?
Absolutely.
Well, from one aspect too, of throwing senior softball in here naturally, um. I'm wondering where that was going to come up. Yeah. There, there's a lot of, a lot of, uh, of, of, uh. Dollars that come into areas for tournaments. I mean, right now you're seeing between five hundred and eight hundred dollars for entry fee for each team that. That's coming into some of these tournaments, uh. Berliner in, in Columbus, they charge for parking every day that you come in there. Every one of those funding, or those cars that come in there, that, those funds go directly back into the park itself. For, uh, updating the park and to, to keep it as a place where people want to come and play. Berliner has, has tournaments almost every weekend. It's similar to, uh, we went to Sylvania, Ohio, which was a beautiful complex and it was owned by. The township, it was owned by the village and it was also owned by the school board. So I think they had a hundred and twenty some acres off of it. It's self-sustaining because of the entry fees and the amount of tournaments come into that place. Uh, they had a ton of soccer fields. They had, you know, the, the, the baseball fields and softball fields were immaculate, but. You know, that's, that's, that's why, uh, we started talking about some of the larger dimensions is to, to. uh, we started talking about some of the larger dimensions is to, to expand that to the, the, beyond the, uh, the children, but you know, the possibility of, of having other groups come in and use the facilities as well. Uh, that, that's, that's when you start drawing big money in, is whenever you can multi-purpose these to, for, for the, uh, the different leagues, different ages and the different sports.
I think to that.
Here in the old guys.
A good part about, you know, what's kind of amazing about Enon is if you were to have a big tournament here, there's all kinds of places for people to go to eat during these tournaments, right? We played some of these, this little softball tournament in South Vienna.
Yeah.
While you're between games, you know, you've got the speedway there, or you're driving twenty minutes, right? I think people would really appreciate the fact that between games, you've got an option of four to five restaurants, that a two-minute drive, right? I think that's pretty unique.
We did have a meeting with a, uh, a, what would we call it, Tim, a, a person who, who may make connections with us as far as, uh, possible, uh, significant funding and what he just kept speaking over and over again was location, 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 that these ball fields are great for the, the Columbus area, for the Springfield, for the Dayton area to, to come out here, because basically we're in one big metro area. Uh, we were talking significant funding from him and the people that he has contact with and, um, that we, we hope comes to fruition, but it's, uh, uh, that would have certain requirements that we need for, um, prob- maybe a little bit bigger baseball, uh, facilities and softball facilities, is that fair?
It is.
I have a question. Once it's put together and all this money's coming in supposedly, is that money gonna be going towards keeping the grounds in the perfect condition that we want them kept in? You were just commenting about the places that you've been to, how they were beautifully kept, we're going to have to hire people to do that, so we need to make sure that there's some kind of funding coming in to pay for those employees, just a comment.
Our, our thoughts would be, and what initially I think we've talked about is, is that we would have, have people that would come in and specifically be assigned to that. Further down the pike, we've also discussed the fact that, uh, the village could probably take on the scheduling, it, when, when this might come to, to the, to be able to be played, I think that's a, a fair statement, so we, we're looking toward this baby steps initially to, to try to get, uh, this place to be known as a place to come to, once that happens, ideally if we can make it, um, a very nice place to come to, then it'll be self-sustaining and we can actually, uh, have people that are wanting to come to us and, and put into it now. You know, again, that's, that's, that's a lot of money and we can just hope that, uh, you know, we, we run across somebody that, that would be, uh, able to help us with some of that.
We're gonna need some anchors, we need some big names to help us out.
And again, if, if anybody in here or anybody that might be watching as, as the facilities or the, uh, the contacts that, uh, would enable us to reach out to, to some of these funding sources, we would greatly appreciate any input or, or any type of, uh, help we could get.
Any other questions?
Question, I, okay, go ahead.
Along with that, I mean, have you guys talked about, you know, what's it cost to build a baseball field? Does anybody have, is it, is it tens of thousands, is it hundreds of thousands, is it?
A, a.
That's a big question.
Yeah. Right now.
Dollars or tens of millions of dollars?
One complex I just came from this past year was, uh, ran to Illinois, it was a twenty-two million dollar complex, but it was a, a private entity. Talking to a, a group that wanted to be our, uh, planners and architects, wanted a hundred eleven thousand just for the planning, but talking to them, at the time that we spoke in, in June or July, a full-size field to be AstroTurfed was between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars. So, again, we, we kind of, uh, got sticker shock on some of this, but, you know, the, there was some, some talk early on about, uh, turfing the infield and then they have the outfield in grass, you know, so you can conceivably play in bad weather on, and you don't lose di- lose games, but again, these are, I don't wanna say pipe dreams, but they're, they're dreams that what we would like to see, but the, the reality of it is, is, is meeting somebody that, uh, uh, you know, we, our, our contact I think has, has a very high possibility of making some of this happen, but we'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed until we actually see it.
Good question, by the way. Kevin?
I know it's very, very preliminary, but are, is any diamonds gonna be lit, gonna have lights?
I think they're gonna have to be.
You're gonna have to at some point.
Just with the, the time change, not changing anymore.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, yeah, yeah, sunlight's gonna last a little bit longer, but it's probably gonna be what, eight, eight-thirty?
And, and there's some, some thoughts now about solar lights, you know, using, using solar power to, to generate your lights, so I'm not sure what, what type of funding there might be, but that's something to, in my own range thoughts, um, you know, so.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thanks to everybody.